Six thirty, so you would all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we got the retirees. The session is over. And the introduction of the junior academic team and advisors. Who are our advisors? Oh, you're right. She said I got it wrong already. Recognition of students that earned the Principal for a Day Award at Riddle Elementary.
Jacob, Mason, and Matty, come on up here. Okay, I'm gonna have you stand in front, okay? These three accomplished quite an amazing feat, something that is not done every year at Riddle. They earned 1,000 reading counts points. Now, to kind of put that in perspective, that's something that actually would take all school year. It's huge. How many books would you guess you read? Just a quick one. Two hundred, two hundred, three hundred fifteen. That's how many books they read over the course of the school year in order to accomplish 1,000 reading counts points. It's amazing. Jacob Miller here, is this back to back, right? Did you do it last year?
Uh, six hundred last.
Six hundred last year. So I am just incredibly proud. Mr. Miller and Mr. McLaughlin here served as principal for the day today. And Ms. Ruplee will be serving for the principal on Thursday. So if you need anything on Thursday, please call Ms. Ruplee, she'll be handling all business at Riddle. I'm just incredibly proud of all three of these kids. It's a tremendous job they did. And I had a lot of fun with both of you today. And Matty, I look forward to Thursday.
Congratulations. Next, we have introduction of the junior academic team and advisors. See you, Kyle. We are going to submit you in a minute.
I'll be here. Enjoy.
So these guys and a few others participated at Valley, spent a couple weeks now on a Saturday for the academic Super Bowl competition. I believe it was third, is that right? They placed third in math and science, but they got first in interdisciplinary press, and then fifteenth in the state.
Yes.
So they did an awesome job. You guys want to talk a little bit about what that looks like? I don't think everybody's probably been to an academic Super Bowl competition. You want to talk about it, I know you do.
It's not too crowded, but there's a lot of eyes on you. You know that there's pressure from all sides. People looking at you to see if you got it right, to make sure that they have it a higher score than you. People behind you judging you based on what questions you got wrong and right. People from your school and other schools, they're just always beaming on you. And sometimes it just, sometimes it's not too overwhelming and sometimes it can be. It's just a game of if you feel like you are paying attention to all those people that are staring at you.
You feel the pressure, right?
Yeah.
Do you guys feel the pressure?
So you, I'm sorry if I, this is Murphy, but so you did math, science, social studies, and language arts?
Yes.
And you came in fifteenth at the state?
Yes.
That's outstanding. I'm very happy to hear that. You should all be very proud of yourselves. Did you get some hardware or something, a medal or a?
We got ribbons if we placed in that subject.
Do you have a nice collection of ribbons from this year?
Yeah, yes.
Good. Glad to hear that. Congratulations. Okay, introduction of Jacob Brubaker and Zeta Whitmer, Students Chosen for Young Leaders Summit. That's all right, you can move on. All right. We have the Board Minutes from the April 17th, 2023 regular board meeting. Also on the docket is approval of the minutes from the May 2nd, 2023 study session. Did everybody have a chance to look through those? Any questions about anything in the minutes? If there are no questions, I would entertain the motion that we approve the minutes as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
And all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on, approval of the funds report as presented. And anything you want to say, Todd?
No, I'll just read through it unless you prefer me to not.
All of it? You gotta read through all of it?
No, just April.
Okay.
Just April. Education Fund in April, we have receipts of $999,464.31. Expenses of $856,911.18. And we transferred $300,000 to the Operations Fund. Our cash balance at the end of April, Education Fund is $1,225,050.80. Debt Service Fund, we have receipts of $7,048.72. Cash balance at the end of April, Debt Service Fund is $891,718.59. And the Operations Fund, we had receipts of $10,511.90. We also had the transfer from the Education Fund of $300,000. And we had expenses in the Operations Fund of $283,634.50. Cash balance in the Operations Fund, excuse me, at the end of April is $83,335.37.
Want to go ahead and do claims?
We're asking for approval of claims for, since the last board meeting, in the amount of $1,028,795.72.
All right, and payroll?
Two payrolls, April 21st and May 5th, totaling $1,035,859.58.
Any questions or comments about the funds report or the financial report? I'll accept the motion that we approve those as read. Mark? Thank you.
Second.
And Casey, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the first reading of the funds, of the, excuse me, the...
Policies.
I know, I'm looking for the word, thank you. Of the policies, we had quite a few. That is not what that's supposed to be. Yes, please, thank you. I am not online, it's bringing up what I had saved earlier today. Thank you, that's what I was looking for. So if you, please correct me if I make mistakes, this is not as easy as it looks. We have the first reading of policy 8500, bylaws 0167.3, policy 611, 6110, policy 9150, policy 6230, thank you, policy 1430, policy 3430, policy 2414, policy 2462. I wish they'd put an eight in there, that would've made it least interesting. Policy 3120.07, policy 3139, policy 3141, policy 6800, policy 7440, policy 341, oh, sorry, 341, okay, 3431, sorry. Gosh. I must've got sunstroke today when I was looking. Okay. Policy 5771, policy 5722, policy 61, oh my gosh.
It's 5772.
5772, okay.
It's awesome.
5722.
Here's the 5722.
6212 is the next policy, 6620, 6621, 6655, policy 9160. That was fine.
This is one.
Come out here, because you haven't been slapped. Anyway, we will go over these a couple more times, you guys can all look them up. We met as a policy committee, went over all these things, and discussed it at the study session a couple weeks, or last week, wasn't it?
May 2nd.
Yeah, not too long ago.
So a couple weeks.
Yeah, all right. So we got that all taken care of, I mean, we discussed them and we tried to come to consensus on the decisions that we made. What, you made it larger?
No, 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 no.
All right. And we're moving on down.
So to just note, in the information tab, it lists 5772. The correct policy is posted here, which is 5722. But just to be clear, the first reading is good, 5722, the actual policy posted is the correct one.
Thank you, Jenny. Next. We have the approval of, what'd you say? Yeah, you're gonna get, yeah. We need to approve an overnight field trip to Manchester University for the wrestling team, June 25th through the 29th.
We could probably, if everyone agreed and you agreed, we could probably approve them all together if you want.
All right. Is everybody okay with that?
At least all the field trips.
Yep. Number two, the approval of the FFA trip to the state convention, June 20th to June 22nd in West Lafayette, Indiana. Number three, approval of rate increase for, oh, never mind.
That's not, I guess it's just too... Thank you, Jenny. So do I have a motion to approve the field trips to Manchester University for the wrestling guys and girls, and approval of the FFA trip to the state conference?
So moved.
Thank you, Ethan.
Second.
And Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the approval of the rate increase for students attending before and after-school daycare program. These were discussed in our study session, and Jan, is there anything you want to say?
Just, I know not everybody is able to attend the study session, but Todd and I went through, we were looking at various areas in the district, and one of those things that caught our attention is the fact that we have not reevaluated our before-school and after-school care since pre-COVID, and Todd's not certain we've looked at it since he has been here. And so we wanted to make sure that we remain as close to cost neutral as possible in regards to this, and so we're proposing the rate increases as outlined here. Doing some checks around the community, I still think that these are very fair prices for parents or the daycare service that's provided before school and after school.
Any questions from the board? Any from the gallery? All right, I would entertain the motion that we approve the rate hikes as explained.
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
And Casey, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, approval of the change of date for graduation ceremony to Friday, May 31st, 2024, for the 22, or excuse me, to 2023 and 2024 school year. Jan, explain that to us at the study session. It's just, doesn't put graduation out like a week after the actual last day of school, and also there are fewer conflicts with athletic events and such at the regional and state levels if we go into, if we do that earlier. Any questions? Any questions from the gallery? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Ethan?
Second.
Mark, Casey. Okay. And all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Just put Macy.
Motion carries six to zero by Macy. I like it, Macy. My husband insisted that I get a new laptop because it would be easier for our accountant. I'm an Apple girl, so this thing and I are not getting along well, just so. Student and stakeholder focus, I have it right here.
First.
Oh, I did miss it, I'm so sorry. I skipped a whole page.
This might contain you, too.
I have no Mark since I was four, just so you know. We grew up next door to each other. And my husband hung around with him and probably played basketball over there, but it would've been weird because, you know, when Charlie graduated, I was 13, so I didn't really need... Anyway, approval of the MOU agreement with the Fulton County Sheriff's Department.
So the contract is here, I've been working with Sheriff Travis Heichman in regards to this. I do believe that we, going back and forth as I look through this, I want to make sure that I point out the changes that we are proposing. We are looking at adding, we have for several years had a full-time SRO, this would be adding one part-time position. The hours, there is a correction that needs to happen here in regards to it being 28 hours per week so that we're in compliance with the Fulton County Sheriff's, the county department, correct? It needs to be 28 hours, so...
29.
Oh, it is 29? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, then it is, I apologize.
So we would be adding a part-time SRO, the equivalent of 29 hours per week, I know we went back and forth on that, so I apologize. We would work, if you scroll down to the next page, item 2.4, we would be working with the weekly schedule with our administrative team and the SROs to make sure that we had important events covered, especially with the part-time officer, making sure that we outlined specifically what coverage needs to happen if we have concerns. We would continue to provide them with laptops and the licensing for spillmen, which is something that we currently do. Another difference in this contract is we would pick up not to exceed $750 per contract year for the uniform of the part-time officer, the sheriff's department takes care of the full-time officer. Working with Todd, this would be, the funds come from a matching grant fund, so as we write that grant, we would ask for reimbursement, so it's matching funds. If we put out 30,000, then the grant would bring forth the other 30,000. So I believe the principals can attest to it, but it has been very helpful to have two SROs moving about the district throughout the course of the day and at various events that we have.
Any questions?
We're sure that uniform piece is not going to break the bank?
No.
Just making sure.
Not to exceed. I would accept a motion that we approve the MOU with the Fulton County Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
Mark and Ethan.
Ethan.
That's exactly where my line went. Okay, and all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on, approval of the letter of agreement between the Indiana School for the Blind and Visually Impaired and Rochester School Corporation.
Jen, if you'd like to share this contract?
Sure. So we have several students in our corporation that have blind, low vision impairment, and there are few and far between teachers in the state, so we typically look to the Indiana School for the Blind and Visually Impaired for those services, so this is just an agreement that we do every year with them. So we pay them on an hourly rate.
Any questions from the board? This is a pretty normal practice, I remember doing this in a different corporation.
Is that second whereas supposed to have us after it?
What?
That second whereas item there has a blank space that is supposed to, I'm assuming, have us as the other part involved.
Is it supposed to say whereas?
Because it just says whereas blank is a little bit...
Oh, we might want to clean that up.
Other than that, it was just...
It's a boilerplate.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Maybe we should just make sure that they're not agreeing to a blank empty T being involved. Yeah.
Any other questions? I will accept a motion that we approve the agreement between the Rochester School Corporation and the Indiana School for the Blind and Visually Impaired.
So moved.
Hey, Stephen, when'd you get here? I'm kidding.
He's melting, leave him alone.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Didn't we, okay, so the next one is approval of the change of the date of graduation. I think we already did that. It's like somebody was on the wrong page, sorry.
You were like super excited about that.
What? I was, I was really excited because, you know, my brain earlier in the month was going, do we do that for this year or is it next year? Okay.
She just can't wait for that.
Now...
She's so excited about that challenge.
Oh, got it, okay, got it. Donations this past month for Columbia Elementary, $40 for student lunch accounts for students in need was paid by an anonymous donor. Riddle Elementary, $250 for One School, One Book from the Riddle PTO. RMS, $500 for end-of-year school activities from the Optimist Club. RHS Drama, $30 to the Drama Club from an anonymous donor. Rochester FFA, $600 for a ski trip for FFA members from Dan Shally. Rochester Community School Athletics for an unknown amount, for a set of golf clubs for the Rochester Community School Corporation students need, and that is from Maurice Murphy.
Maurice.
Why does it say? No, it's Maurice Murphy.
Oh. There was a typo here. All right. Any other questions about donations? All right, I would accept the motion to approve the donations as read.
Second.
Casey and Ethan. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I always wondered what would happen if you raised your right hand, it was just a thought. Okay, so the motion carries six to zero. Next, we move on to the personnel report.
As you begin the personnel report, I would propose that we remove the recommendations for volleyball coaches at this time. I need to seek some clarification around what was submitted.
All righty then. So for Columbia Elementary's Summer Intercession, Brittany Ross, first grade teacher, Michelle Jaeger, kindergarten teacher, Hannah Clemens, instructional assistant, all at their hourly rate. At Riddle Elementary, Summer Reading Program, Sarah Dalton, teacher, Jennifer Keller, teacher, Sydney Goodman, teacher, and Rebecca Lee, teacher, all at their hourly rate. For the high school, Summer School, Ken Hughes, Algebra I and II, Ryan Helt, English, Bryce Roberts, PE, they'll do halftime, and Tristan Wilson for PE will do the other half, and Justin Pearson for ASC, and those are all at their hourly rate as well. Summer Intercession, Deb Wolford, math, Ken Hughes, math, Bryn Wilson, English, Eric Davis, English, and those, everyone's at their hourly rate up to this point. Athletic recommendations, Colton Meadows, eighth grade girls' basketball, stipend $517.64. Are those, those are the volleyball you want me to skip, right? Got it, just making sure. Moving on, resignations, Mary Ryder, Columbia Elementary, effective May 12th, 2023. Kelly Gard, Riddle Elementary Counselor, effective May 26th, 2023. Keaton Mills, RHS Custodial, that, effective May 5th, 2023. Ashley Ferble, Columbia Elementary IA, effective May 6th, 2023. Mindy Carroll, Corporation Speech and Language Pathologist, effective June 30th, 2023. And Family Medical Need Act. Chelsea Correll, starting for 17, 23, for approximately two months. Brittany Meyer, extension from 4/24/23 through 5/26/23. Joanna Johnson, starting 4/26/23 through 5/10/23. Any questions or comments about these? All right, I will accept a motion that we approve the personnel report with the exception of the volleyball.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Jenny and Ethan. That's okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Now we have superintendent's business.
So we begin by asking each of the principals to share out successes from the last month, things that we're working on, and I think to some degree that survival over the next morning, and then what supports we need moving forward. So Jason, if you don't mind starting for Columbia?
All right, so we've had a lot going on this month. We had our annual kindergarten zoo field trip, went very well, we moved that to a Thursday, and it was less crowded. Uh, we moved that to a Thursday, and, uh, it was less crowded, fantastic trip. Uh, we also had a petting zoo brought to us by our PTO, uh, last week, and they brought in, uh, a bunch of animals. It was really, uh, a good experience for those kids. It's amazing at how many kids haven't actually been up and close with a pig or a goat or some things like that, and, um, so it was a fantastic experience for, um, for them.
Was that school-wide, Jason?
Uh, yes, ma'am, school-wide, and we also did, uh, like a, uh, planning, we did, we planted some, uh, every kid got an opportunity to plant a, a flower and take home for the, the summer to plant, so, um, it was a good day. Uh, we had an artist in residency at Columbia, and we do that every year. Jill Weaver brings, uh, brings in somebody. This year she brought in a high school jazz band, and they came in and played, uh, played some really good tunes, and had a lot of fun teaching the kids, letting the kids kind of see the instruments and stuff like that, and they did a great rendition of Journey, so, uh, I might have been dancing in the back. We also had a, uh, a, a new thing that we've done here at, uh, Columbia for the first year. We always have a parent night for incoming kindergarten parents, but this year we decided to do a, um, we called it Wild About Kindergarten, that was our theme, we'll theme it up every year from now on, but, um, so we did like a safari theme, but the, the purpose of it was to get all of our incoming kindergarten parents in the building, let them meet teachers, let them walk around while school was going on, see the classrooms, um, get, get out on the playground and play, we got a bus, let the kids go on bus rides, they, they absolutely love that. Um, and then we, we raffled off some, um, some supplies for the kids to help some parents out and stuff like that, and they just really had a good time. It was, uh, very laid back, um, the parents, I think, really enjoyed it, the kids obviously enjoyed coming in, they were so excited, they didn't, they wanted to come back the next day and get kindergarten started, but, um, it was, it was good, and, uh, I appreciate everybody that, uh, that helped out with that, that was a, a good event, so. We also, uh, coming up, we have got, uh, a Cubs game on Wednesday, and this is a PBIS celebration, um, for the number of, um, star cards that our kids, they set a goal and they reached it, and, uh, the star card piece continues to be, uh, I'll get you a total count at the end of the year, but, um, I started hanging them up on my walls outside of my office, and my walls got covered, and, um, I just, I ran out of space, and I, I'm not going to lie, I don't have time to go out there. I have a stack of them probably this high on my desk right now that I just haven't been able to keep up with. There's, um, there's so much recognition for, um, the positive, uh, behavior that, uh, the kids are doing, and it's, and they still love it, they still love it, so, um, they're not getting tired of it, if anybody would tell you that, uh, every time some kid passes me in the hallway and they're carrying a star card, they stop and they tell me about it, um, and it's, it's a really good, uh, good experience for them, so. We have high school kids coming over to, uh, walk the halls on Friday, uh, Zebra Zone on Friday, and, uh, we're also going to do some, uh, outdoor activities through our PTO, um, some water activities and, um, some bouncing and, and things like that out, tomorrow and, um, Wednesday. On Wednesday, our pre-k will host a, um, graduation ceremony and a little bit of a concert, um, for the parents, and, um, that will be their last day, and, uh, they, they've been rehearsing that in their little gowns and outfits, and they, it's pretty, pretty cute, so. Hate to see, uh, hate to see it come to an end, but that's what we've got this summer. We'll have, uh, summer reading over at Riddle, and, um, we'll have summer speech as well,
Any questions from Mr. Snyder? Mr. Bernanke?
Um, we're at Riddle, we wrapped up our ILEARN, um, early May, so, you know, shout out to Tech, thank you for all your assistance there, Mrs. McLaughlin, um, getting everything ready, and really our Title I teachers too, they help tremendously with all the makeups that we, we have to do, and that's a lot of work, and some of our teachers, they get kind of trapped in their little cave there for a week, and when they come out and they're done with ILEARN, it's, they're kind of shocked to be back in the real world. So, it's, I really appreciate that, it's, it's a lot of work to get that done. Um, we had our red carpet event at the Times Theater, so thank you Times Theater for allowing us to do that, and RTC and Dakota there for filming that, that was a really nice event, really cool, um, they streamed it live, and all the kids dressed up, and they were super pumped, like even when the screen came on, just that showed that there was a DVD in the thing, they were, whoa! It was a big deal. Um, all three of our grade levels went on a field trip, so they hit up the zoo, um, museum down in Indy, and a Fort Wayne Science Central, the fourth grade had their wax museum today that went really well, um, and the fourth grade will be doing their color run over to middle school tomorrow, and, uh, the last day we'll have a field day going on, and, uh, as far as gearing up for the summertime, um, we've got our I-Read Summer Camp, that'll be the first couple of weeks, and as Mr. Snyder mentioned, we have the Summer Reading Program at Riddle, and Fort County will be over there this summer as well, so Riddle's billing will still be hopping a little bit this summer, and I like that.
Questions from Mr. Bernanke? Mrs. Murphy?
Uh, we also wrapped up ILEARN, things went well, thanks to Tech and Megan, and again, we had the same thing, we had some teachers step up and help with makeups and getting our working students done, and that's very, very helpful, so that went well. Our academic Super Bowl team, you met earlier, did very well with their Valley competition. Um, we had Teacher Appreciation Week, and we appreciate all the extras that, um, people did to help us, some parents sent some things in, some students did some nice things, um, we had a good week with that. We had our seventh and eighth grade semi-formal end-of-the-year dance, but not this Saturday, but the Saturday before, that went very well, um, as well, the kid, it's always fun to watch the kids dance and have a good time, and they're dressed up and look nice, so, and they always enjoy the candy bar as well. Uh, the fifth and sixth beach party was this past Friday, and that's a whole different environment, a whole different kind of fun, and there was Lays and, uh, coconuts and different floaties and all kinds of things that they enjoyed, um, and had a great time as well. Uh, we did just get back from our Washington DC trip, I'm not fully recovered. It'll take a few days, I went eight years ago, and apparently eight years makes a difference. It was, we had beautiful weather though, we couldn't have asked for better weather, it was seriously seventy-three and sunny, it was beautiful every day, we saw a lot of great things, the kids had a good time, and that's why we do it, and there was lots of thank yous, and, uh, Mr. Porterfield, who was here for the academic Super Bowl team, he went with us, and he had a lot, he could have been our guide, he was very knowledgeable and super excited and, and had a great time, and so that's, well, that's what you want to see, that's why we do those things. Our Ag and Facts class, uh, combined for a dairy unit and had a guest speaker, her name was Alex Levalette, I think that's how, how you say it, she's from Cheesescapes, and they did charcuterie, um, and the kids had a great time, they were not only learning about different cheeses and how to organize a board, um, with different things, but tasting them as well. Um, there was ranges from kids that liked a whole bunch of them to not liking any of them, so that was fun for them as well. Um, upcoming, we have fifth grade field day tomorrow, as well as the fourth grade color run coming over. On Wednesday, we're going to film the lip dub, which is huge, RMS, because they're super excited about filming the lip dub, so we'll be looking for that to come out. Our seventh grade breakfast will be on Thursday, as well as our award ceremonies for fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and then of course our PBIS, PBIS Day on Friday, which is controlled chaos.
Any questions? Mrs. Atkins?
Uh, for the high school, so, um, the middle of April, we had the art banner contest, I know some of you were there, um, I'm going to give a shout-out to Mrs. Schaefer because from eight to twelve, I think she swept grades eight through twelve against Castanum Valley, so that's always a pretty cool night, um, but her sweeping that was kind of fun for us. Um, right after that, we had the prom crash reenactment, where the sheriff's department and the EMS and Kiwanah Fire Department came in, Robert Chauvin came in that morning and told his story to the kids, I think it was very impactful to them, um, the sheriff's department, Woodlawn, and Judge Heller then did the whole reenactment, right down to the accident, and then an ER scene, and then the judge scene with, um, somebody getting tried for drunk driving, so, and we all felt like that went very well. Um, we had the FFA banquet, and then we had prom, which is always a great time. Uh, Mr. Lau did the EV Grand Prix World Finals with his EDD class. We had the recruit, recruitment fair, um, we had over thirty businesses there this year, um, one had over twenty applications from students, just handed in even that day, um, she ended up scheduling interviews at the high school, so she came in, scheduled with the kids in twenty-minute increments, and the conference room across from my office was just an interview. So, it was really kind of neat to see, it was, um, I always ask the businesses for feedback, and it was really fun to hear them talk about how professional our kids were, how they had these resumes ready, and I'll give that testament to the teachers, they did a good job preparing the kids. We had Christina Hughes lead a Safe School Athletic Walk through, through all of the areas that our athletes might be, um, she did that with the fire department and sheriff's department and police department, um, we went all through the high school, through a lot of the middle school, and then out to the baseball fields, softball fields, and that was, I felt very beneficial. We had our final choir concert and band concert, eighth grade did their reality fair. Um, this past week, they had the downhill derby on the hill. Our eighth graders just got back from the National Honor, National Junior Honor Society trip as well, and then we had Senior Honors Night Friday night, and that was where, um, the seniors received their scholarships, and with just over a hundred and six thousand of dollars was given out to our seniors that night, it was pretty cool. Uh, coming up, these people all get to have fun, we get to have finals, so our start, uh, Wednesday is our finals. It is for me, because the kids are all in their class taking classes, so, um, and then Friday, we have our senior breakfast, we'll go walk through the, um, the elementaries, and then we'll do graduation practice, so that's a big day, on top of the underclassmen will have their awards, and then, uh, June second is Baccalaureate Graduation, and then we'll do Summer School and Intercession. I think that's what we've got coming up. Just a few things.
Before we close, I don't know if Mr. Martens or Ms. Miller would like to give, um, a brief overview of our meeting with Jack Jordan and your thoughts or words that you'd like to share. Ethan, he says. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I thought it was very good meeting that we were, uh, discussing a lot of stuff. We introduced our, our corporation to Representative Jack Jordan, had a lot of good conversation, we were able to be fairly candid about some things that, uh, we weren't happy with on the legislative side of things, but also some things that have been going, uh, pretty well and have, have worked out well, uh, on our end, uh, talking about things like all the pathways we can offer and, and all the good bits come out of that, um, so I thought the, uh, that it was a very good discussion, there were a lot of, you know, a lot of good things, a lot of, uh, some criticism to share, and then it was, was very productive and felt very constructive.
Yeah, I agree, it was a nice opportunity for, for, uh, for the high school and the principals to, uh, shed light on themselves and what we're doing here, which was a wonderful thing to see. Thank you, Luke, for taking your finger out of the dyke and letting us kind of have some opportunity to speak to him on a candid situation. That was nice, thanks for coming out, but I think it was a good, I think we represented the school very well, and I think, uh, Jack was duly impressed, so.
I, I felt like his excitement about how many pathways we had was, was just really, he was like shocked in a good way, you know, that we have, how do you do sixteen pathways? So, we, you know, Oscar and Lori had a chance to, uh, be excited about that and talk about what we're doing, and it was eye-opening for me because I don't know the day-to-day, but, uh, I did feel like it was a good opportunity, and, um, I do feel like he listened to us, and I'm sure that things on his end are not easy either, so, uh, but I, I just thought it was just a really good meeting.
It was ironic that you guys were the Jack Jordan, our kid was a DC, we had Mike Brown and Jack Jordan and Rudy Yacke, all of them came out to talk to us at the Capitol.
That was so cool, I got pictures.
We were very fortunate that day.
And I want to thank the team, as we wind down this year, everybody in this room plays such an integral part of what we do day in and day out, so thank you all for your leadership and your support. You can sense the energy in the district, and it's just a matter of, uh, containing that until Friday, three o'clock, so. That's all I have.
All right, uh, if anyone would care to make a motion to adjourn?
I just want to say one quick thing, I know it's a beautiful night, but the Fulton County Youth Leadership Academy had graduation here yesterday, uh, it's not affiliated directly with the school, but it is supported by all three school corporations within the, um, within Fulton County, and it's just very exciting and encouraging to see those students, and when Lori was mentioning about interviewing, um, that's one of the things that we did on our last session was mock interviews, and, um, the people that were brought in are people that work in human, um, resources in, in Indianapolis, and they were impressed by how well our students interviewed, and just the opportunities you all have given them is such a benefit, and so I think the, um, all of the corporation, high school especially, because supporting that kind of a, an organization is, I feel like it's important, but just like with the Adult Leadership Academy takes time, um, that, so does that from the youth end, so, thank you for that, thank you for May seminary, and I just have a, like, soft spark, soft spot for Leadership Academy, so congratulations to Todd for graduating, and thank you for representing Rochester this year.
I agree with it.
And then if no one else has something to say, make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you stopping by, have a great evening, and listen, um, you know, when we had our real, you know, moment of silence, I'm praying for y'all this poor day, we've packed so much into it, but there's also a little bit of chaos, it's chaos, it's just chaos, and, uh, but for you elementary people, don't take all the snacks, you know, they'll be bringing you stuff, it's crazy. Bring them home, take them over here.